Engagement, subcontractor coordination, workforce development, and a very strong commitment to diversity and inclusion through multiple local.
Yes, I'm sorry to interrupt you mid-sentence.
No, no, yes, I'm sorry.
So we're just hitting our six thirty transition time.
Yes.
So I'm just going to address that and then we'll continue.
Okay.
Uh, discussion as appropriate. So counsel, should I adjourn our committee of the whole? Uh, direction, please, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, you can adjourn this meeting to the call of the chair and then call the next meeting into order. Adjourn that to the call of the chair, then call this meeting back into order, ma'am. Thank you.
And as I call the second meeting to order, do I call it forward as a statutory, uh, meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. All right. So, uh, at this time, we are going to adjourn our committee of the whole. And then to the call of the chair, thank you. So just tell me a direction and then I forget it. I appreciate that support. Okay. And then, uh, I will now call to order our statutory annual meeting. And I am going to adjourn that meeting to the call of the chair. Thank you. And now I will, uh, reconvene committee of the whole. Appreciate your patience.
Oh, no, 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 thank you.
Thank you so much, counsel. Please continue.
I do want to go back to their strengths, which was community engagement, their subcontractor coordination, workforce development, and a very strong commitment to diversity and inclusion. They have numerous partnerships with local entities like the Access for All, IBEW, West Michigan Hispanic Contractors Association, and other local trade schools and workforce programs. Both firms were viewed, um, as fully capable of delivering this project. However, Miller Davis's team was found to have more local experience and deeper technical expertise as it relates to parking structures. Um, as far as their project understanding and approach, Miller Davis was the only contractor to per- to, to ensure that their traffic control plan keeps metro bus service and public access open during construction. And they had a very detailed approach such as weekly meetings, daily coordination sessions, and real-time digital reporting to track, uh, the project process. Elite also provided solid, a solid project plan, uh, with weekly owner, architect, contractor meetings, daily site coordination, and monthly written progress reports. And also while we're organized, their plan included fewer details about downtown traffic control and public access. However, their approach met all the RFP requirements, just a little bit less site-specific than Miller Davis. Both firms showed strong financial stability and safety performance. Both firms have deep local connections. Miller Davis employs more than forty local staff and has a long history of using Kalamazoo County subcontractors. And Elite is headquartered in Kalamazoo and act- very actively promotes small and disadvantaged business participation, local job fairs, and trade partnerships that support workforce development. While Elite's pre-construction fees were lower than Miller Davis, their general condition costs, uh, were not itemized and were double those of Miller Davis. So in that regard, it is considered because of Miller Davis's transparency and itemizing their general conditions cost, they are less risky to the county, allowing for predictability and less variance. So in summary, both firms were strong. Miller Davis scored six hundred and ninety-four and Elite six hundred and eighty-nine. So that's a five-point difference with truly the, they are both aligned with county values and goals. Miller Davis is providing excellent expertise and plans and predictability and riskiness. And Elite will be able to perform their job, does not have the technical expertise and experience and years' track record with County Kalamazoo that Miller Davis has. However, they provided a very detailed workforce development, local engagement plan. I believe that is all of my notes for this that I wanted to present. So if Miller Davis scored the highest, it's, it's up to the board to decide what direction they want to go as they both provide added value in different areas. As the, as a purchasing person, I do recommend award to the highest score just because that is, uh, the most transparent way of awarding. However, there are, our, our goals may differ. So.
I appreciate, uh, the oversight and the, the thoroughness, the thoughtfulness, the collaboration with both the process, with the adherence to the new, um, response, the bidder policy that we worked diligently on together. I think, uh, commitment to the process and the validity of the process and the subject matter expertise brought to bear through the review for me give me a lot of assurance that we made informed decision and that we've come forward with a recommendation that is both sound and aligned with our values. Um, I see Vice Chair Protem.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for this very thorough, uh, report. Uh, my one question that I did not hear, how soon would this company, whichever one we select, be able to step in and get going on the project? I mean, is there any lag in if we hired him tomorrow?
That is.
Be able to start tomorrow afternoon?
I am so grateful for that question because it is very important. We do believe that because of Miller Davis's extensive resources, they will have a better chance of not having issues with completing this project since this is, you know, we want this done as quickly as possible. They do have access to prefabrication concrete probably more readily and easily than Elite Davis just because of their experience and their outreach and their, uh, size.
Okay, uh, did the, either, either company give you any kind of, um, well, we can't start for until next Christmas time or something like that?
No.
Or did they say, yeah, we can get going pretty quickly?
Right. That it's, it's up to us. However, if the other contractors specified more of an issue, the longer we took to make a decision. Miller Davis did not present that concern.
Okay. I know, uh, Vice Chair Protem wants it groundbroken, uh, no. Vice Chair.
Yeah, I share Vice Chair Protem's concerns on the expediency of this project. Um, but first of all, I want to say thank you, Director Barbosa. I think where we are now compared to where we were three years ago or two years ago when we, we tried to do something like this, that just no one ever followed. Um, I, I think you are such a breath of fresh air to this, um, process. I think you've, you've narrowed it down to two excellent, excellent companies. And, um, I think either way we go, the board is going to be well-served. Um, I, you know, I, my gist of it is, looking at it, I, I tend to factor more into the community involvement, community engagement, and I like the fact that they're involved with the Hispanic American Council, they're involved with all these different, um, apprenticeship programs that I, I lean towards Elite. But, um, I, I could go with either one. Um, but, um, those, you, we've got two good companies. Um, I do will, I mean, we're going to be talking about copper pipes or whatever type of pipes in the household hazardous waste, uh, building, which that's always gets to me when we have a project that we're using the same people again. But, um, I, I, I'm, I'm, my leaning is towards Elite, but I could go either way. And most importantly, I've heard from members of the building authority, I've heard members from, um, different organizations throughout the community, labor organizations, of business owners, that this process works and it is so much better and they value it because of the ability so that they can look and see how other people did. Maybe next time when they go through, they're like, oh, we'll put this in. I think you, you've started something here that's, will probably trend to other municipalities. And I think kudos to the hard work that you put in, um, for administration and for everybody's, um, thing. I, I lean towards Elite Construction, but I'm, I'm happy to go with either or.
Are there any other comments? All right. At this time, I think administration likes some direction, uh, from the board, sort of by consensus. Uh, they need to begin preparation of contracts so that construction may move underway. Uh, Commissioner Wheeler.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I'm with Vice Chair. I'm, I'm leaning towards Elite as well. Um, I think they bring, uh, some, some really unique things to the table as well.
I'll, uh, I will share, uh, viewpoint. I think the process has identified the, uh, the vendor that's come forward, uh, with the highest score, uh, that would most expeditiously execute the project that we're desperately in, in need of. Um, and so I'll be in support of Miller.
Commissioner Mazur, um, I, I agree. I support Miller.
We have a. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Ray?
Yes, um, I would also be in support of Miller Davis, just respecting the process that's in place, accepting the recommendation.
Any others? It's not a vote, but, uh, we need to buy consensus.
I would do Elite.
Vice Chair Protem?
Uh, I'd go with Miller Davis. The score was, uh, what they recommend and, um, uh, need to, we're two years late now.
Any other feedback? Okay. Commissioner Gessler, yes?
Yeah, I, I hate to be a supporter of process, but I really am in this case. And if it's a five-point difference, that's the same as if it was fifty. Miller Davis, thank you.
All right. Thank you. So I think we have consensus at this point to move forward the contract with Miller Davis. I want to thank all of the applicants, everyone involved
Yes.
in the process and the development, in the integrity of what we've done here. I'm proud of this work and look forward to seeing, uh, a beautiful parking structure. And we have more projects to undertake in the near future. So I have heard. So we'll see how that goes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. All right. Thank you for that presentation and discussion. We're continuing, uh, with our committee of the whole agenda. Next coming forward, this presentation on the recommendation from the Housing Ed-Hoc Committee on housing millage applications for the multifamily category. And we will welcome Housing Director, welcome, uh, welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, Vice Chair, Vice Chair Protem, Commissioners. Um, I will be brief tonight. Um, the Housing Ed-Hoc Committee met and they recommended three projects, Healthy House in the amount of up to three hundred thousand dollars for fire suppression at a multifamily unit designed to support women with substance use disorder located at thirty-six twenty-five Douglas Avenue. This would include site work, storm, water main, and a four-inch service to the building, jack and bore, and asphalt replacement. They have to have fire suppression to get a certificate of occupancy. We also supported supportive services on Healthy House. And I know they also applied to your funding and a couple of you recommended that. But, um, we also, you gave a recommendation under supportive services on Healthy House. The next one is Edison Community Partners in the amount of five hundred thousand to support the bricks and mortar of the Cal Recovery Project located at three thirty-three East Elcott. As you know, Cal Recovery is a forty-eight unit of permanent supportive housing in Kalamazoo's Edison Neighborhood, designed to support individuals enrolled in the Problem Solving Courts. With timely environmental clearance, closing on the project is targeted, targeted for January twenty-twenty-six. The developer is in the house. You know that we have struggled to get this one to the finish line. It has a pretty complicated, layered financing deal and it is really, he has ARPA money, he has prior housing millage money, he has opioid settlement money. We really need to get this one, um, to the start line in January. The third one that the committee scored was Hope Through Navigation in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand for Phase Two of the Tiny House Project, subject to the purchase of the property from the City of Kalamazoo Brownfield and a revised pro forma and updated bid documents, which we are working actively with, uh, um, project manager, Gwendolyn Hooker, who's also in the house. There were two projects that we did not score. We held back. One is Beyond Burdick and the other one is Cedar Street Apartments. We will bring the Ed-Hoc Committee together again and we will score those and bring that recommendation forward in December. That's all I have, Chair.
Thank you, Director. Are there questions? Okay, seeing none at this time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you to the members of the Ed-Hoc Committee for the work and feedback, uh, and for all of the applicants. So also, so now we have, uh, four remaining items. We had our first reading, the Retirement Resolution Amendment of Section sixteen, memorializing a retirement pension, retiree and active, uh, member benefit adjustments. I think one of the things to be mindful for, this will come forward for, uh, a final vote at our next meeting. Um, but you know, we made some reductions to the fringe rate in our budget last year that afforded us a little bit more flexibility, uh, to meet board priorities. We're looking at four hundred thousand dollars of those sort of projects, uh, this time. In our next budget cycle, uh, this may have impacts where the fringe rate may need to be adjusted maybe next year or the year after to ensure that we're keeping stability in the benefit fund. And so it may have impacts on, uh, what other priorities can be addressed. So I think just being transparent with the board that that's a reality of the decision. Um, but as I have advocated already, you know, our retirees have gone a long time with no adjustment, which really is effectively a reduction in the value of their retirement benefit. And particularly for the folks at the lower end of our pay scale, that's, uh, you know, very, very difficult to weather. Any other comments or questions on that, Vice Chair?
Just reiterating and emphasizing what the, the Chair said. She's absolutely correct. Um, in every aspect of it, the fact that we need to do this and the fact that as we go forward in future budget adjustments, this is eating into about a million dollars a year of our surplus. With, with both the active retirees and the employee benefits, what we're doing is eating into about a million. And we've got about a four and a half to five million dollar, um, that eating in that's going to be in the bond rate. And then the, as the Chair said, our employee benefits will probably, our fringe rate will probably, if not next year, the year after, will have to probably go back up in order to cover some of these specific non-medical benefits that we're, we're giving employees. Um, that being said, I think we need to do all that, but I think we need to be just cognizant as more and more shiny things come. And I'm going to use Commissioner Gessler's line. This is, this is one of those priorities. I, I'm prioritizing this, but as other things come down the, the pipe, this is, this is what I'm going with and I'm going with it now. So.
All right. I'll take us to the next items, the proclamation honoring the Kalamazoo Ladies Library Association and their induction into the Michigan Women's Hall of Fame. Congratulations to them on that. Any comments or questions? Next item is a proclamation recognizing October twenty-two, twenty-twenty-five as Juvenile Justice Awareness, Awareness Month. If I could talk and we'll take that up, uh, for a vote, uh, later. Any questions or comments? All right. Finally, uh, our last is proclamation declaring October twenty-third as Keep the Lights On After School. That's a final first reading. Exhaust the agenda for our committee of the whole. I will call that meeting adjourned. And then I will reconvene our statutory meeting. And then I'd like to propose a recess. We need a break. Yeah, just, just cracking that gavel. Ten, fifteen minutes? What's the, to seven? Fifteen minutes? Fifteen minutes? We'll take a fifteen-minute recess. Thank you. The call of Chair.
I'm gonna call to order our statutory meeting. It's quiet in the chambers, please. We're gonna move forward with business. Thank you, counsel. Okay. Excellent. Thank you to the commissioners for our work and effort. We're gonna reconvene from our recess and begin at the top of our agenda for our October 7, 2025 meeting. Item number one is our invocation and reflection. Commissioner Gistler, or is it Commissioner Taylor? Commissioner Taylor has volunteered to lead us in that this evening.
And I kinda got thrown into this, so please excuse my brevity on this. Bow our heads. Dear Lord, we ask that you give us the wisdom to make the best decisions for all residents of Kalamazoo County. We ask that you give us the patience to treat each other with respect and know that together we will come up with a better solution than we ever could on our own. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, will you please call our roll?
Commissioner Mazur.
Here.
Commissioner Morales.
Reverend.
Commissioner Ray. Chair Strebs.
Here.
Vice Chair Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Here.
Commissioner DeLu. Commissioner Gistler.
Here.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler. Seven present.
Thank you. And Commissioner Ray will join us shortly. We'll go to item four, proclamations. We'll begin with item 2025-974, request for approval of a proclamation honoring Ron Kelly Jr. for 25 years of service. That's gonna be presented by Vice Chair Taylor.
And this truly is an honor for me to do this.
Deputy Kell, would you like to join him? Yeah, he wants to just stay hard at work. Well, we'll let him take a break for some recognition.
He's always, always working. Whereas Ron Kelly Jr. has served the residents of Kalamazoo County with honor and dedication for 25 years as of September 18, 2025, and whereas Deputy Kelly has faithfully served as deputy in the Kalamazoo County Sheriff's Office, consistently going above and beyond in his role, displaying a level of kindness and consideration that is truly admirable, and whereas Deputy Kelly's vigilance and care are unparalleled, whether ensuring the safety of the county administration building and surrounding area, or making sure that employees and guests alike feel secure, and whereas his keen awareness and proactive approach are vital to maintaining a safe and welcoming environment for everyone who steps through our doors, setting a high standard of service and commitment that inspires confidence throughout the department and community, and whereas Deputy Kelly's service at his post in the county administration building has demonstrated to visiting residents and county employees alike professionalism, dedication, and character possessed by so many high-quality individuals employed in the sheriff's office, and whereas during the May 7, 2024 tornado, Deputy Kelly demonstrated leadership and presence of mind by swiftly sweeping the administration building, locating employees and visitors, guiding them to shelter, and providing frequent updates to ensure calm and safety, and whereas Deputy Kelly is attentive, insightful, and engaged with all happenings within the county administration building, so that every employee who works there on a daily basis feels safer knowing he is on duty, and whereas countless residents have benefited from Deputy Kelly's compassion and willingness to go the extra mile, whether by providing information, responding to medical emergencies, or assisting individuals with mobility challenges and crossing busy intersections, and whereas the county of Kalamazoo wishes to acknowledge and honor employees whose longevity brings expertise, strength, and stability to public service, and Deputy Kelly's 25 years of service exemplify these values. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners does hereby acknowledge with deepest gratitude the many years of dedication and service that Deputy Ron Kelly Jr. has imparted to the residents of the county, and offers its best wishes to Deputy Kelly for many more years of mutual association, and extends heartfelt appreciation on behalf of the employees, residents, and visitors of Kalamazoo County.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. That motion carries. Congratulations.
Well, thank you. I did promise some people in the audience I wouldn't do a speech because of time. I started this career in law enforcement in the year 2000. Simply so I wouldn't forget how long I've been employed in the sheriff's department. Counting to 25 from zero is much easier than trying to do it any other way. I was working the road with the past sheriffs that were in here, current undersheriff that was in here. Seen a lot, did a lot. Couldn't ask for a better community to be in. In 2018, I was working the road patrol and a memo came out from one of my bosses. Went out to all road patrol, all qualified road patrol, anybody wanted to take a position at the county administration building, put in their resume to come down here. Long story short, I got the position because there was no one else who wanted it. So hopefully I made you guys down here in this building, commissioners, staff, everybody here makes it so much easier for me to come in every day. And hopefully I did what you expect me to do. And to my undersheriff and anyone else listening in this room that gave me this opportunity to come down here, I appreciate it. Thank you. Oh, it's almost time for bed.
And I just, really quick, a couple of years back, some staff at the county administration building watched Deputy Kelly give his lunch to a homeless person. So I just, the compassion of this man. So thank you. Wonderful.
Madam Chair, and I'm sorry, I just have to say this Deputy Kelly also helped to write the Disruptive Persons Policy. So he did, his contribution is innumerable.
Thank you. I guess, to be clear, our agenda reminds me to do a roll call. I asked for a voice vote. So Clerk, will you please call the roll? Let's really formalize that.
Commissioner Morales.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Ray.
Yes.
Chair Strebs.
Yes.
Vice Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu. Commissioner Gistler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler.
Yes.
Commissioner Mazur.
Yes.
Eight yes.
That motion carries. Congratulations again, Deputy Kelly. All right, we'll move now to item 2025-1252. This is a request for approval of the proclamation recognizing October 2025 as Juvenile Justice Awareness Month. Mr. Morales?
Alrighty, whereas Juvenile Justice Awareness Month observed for October 1 through the 31st shines a light on the critical issues faced by youth entangled in the juvenile justice system, recognizing the urgent need for reform and the promotion of rehabilitation over punishment, and whereas this month-long observance aims to raise public awareness through educational campaigns, community events, and advocacy efforts that highlight the importance of providing support and resources to at-risk youth, ensuring they have the opportunity to thrive and break free from the cycle of incarceration, and whereas Juvenile Justice Awareness Month calls upon communities, organizations, and policymakers to work toward creating a more just and equitable system that prioritizes the well-being and potential of every young person, and whereas Bent Not Broken is dedicated to the empowerment and support of youth impacted by the juvenile justice system, recognizing the immense potential and resilience within each individual youth, and whereas Bent Not Broken provides a safe and nurturing environment for youth to engage in peer coaching, leadership development, and community building activities, and whereas the organization is committed to fostering a sense of agency and self-worth among its participants, ensuring that every youth feels heard, valued, and supported. And whereas the youth of Bent Not Broken actively participate in the creation and implementation of programs taking ownership of their personal and collective growth, and whereas Bent Not Broken staff and board members, many of whom have been directly impacted by the criminal legal system, bring invaluable perspectives and experiences that enhance the organization's mission, and whereas Bent Not Broken has demonstrated a commitment to continuous improvement using pre-test and post-test to measure the effectiveness of its programs empowering youth and supporting staff, and whereas Bent Not Broken seeks to break the cycle of incarceration and build a brighter future for its participants through education, mentorship, and advocacy. Now for, now therefore be it proclaimed that Bent Not Broken shall continue its mission with unwavering dedication, striving to uplift and empower every youth it serves, and to create a more just and equitable society for all, and be it further proclaimed that the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners recognize October 2025 as Juvenile Justice Awareness Month, and witness whereof, we hereby affirm our support and commitment to Bent Not Broken's mission and the transformative work it undertakes in Kalamazoo County, Michigan.
Motion made by Commissioner Morales, supported by Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Ray.
Yes.
Chair Strebs.
Yes.
Vice Chair Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu. Commissioner Gistler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler.
Yes.
Commissioner Mazur. Commissioner Morales.
Yes.
Eight yes.
That motion carries. Congratulations. Thank you to our youth for being so patient while we sat through these meetings, for your well-deserved recognition for all of you. Thank you to our youth for being so patient while we sat through these meetings, for your well-deserved recognition for all of you. Thank you for that. I'm going to move us forward to item five, communications. We have item 2025-1035, Kalamazoo County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority 2024 Annual Report. Any questions or concerns with that? Okay. All right, we'll move to item 2025-1240. We have a FOIA appeal R. 016089082525.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, counsel.
Yes, will you please refer that to Corporation Counsel's Office for handling and response? Thank you.
Thank you so much, counsel. That will be referred to you directly.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, we'll go to item 2025-1210, Wexford County Resolution 2515 opposing the House of Representatives fiscal year 26 budget cuts to county revenue sharing. Item 2025-1211, Chippewa County Resolution 2519 supporting Senate Bills 293 and 294 that would create an effective bond for forfeit profit for animals seized due to pending reactive court cases involving violations of animal neglect or cruelty by the animal's owner. We also had item 2025-1233, letter from Erie Clapp expressing concern regarding the purchase of the McDonald's property. 2025-1234, letter from Annette Van Der Saalm expressing concern regarding the purchase of the McDonald's property. 2025-1235, Crawford County Resolution opposing the MDHHS Plan for competitive procurement process for the prepaid inpatient health plans. Item 2025-1236, Crawford County Resolution fiscal year 26 budget cuts to county revenue sharing. 2025-1241, Genesee County Resolution to recognize the month of October as Indian Heritage Month. 2025-1237, Eaton County Resolution opposing House of Representatives fiscal 26 budget cuts to county revenue sharing. And 2025-1242, Genesee County Resolution to recognize the month of July as Disability Pride Month. Are there any other communications from the commission? All right. Seeing none, let's go to item six, approval of our minutes. Entertain a motion for 2025-1232, approval of September 16th draft committee of the whole and regular meeting minutes. Motion made by Vice Chair Taylor, supported by Commissioner Wheeler. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We'll go to item seven, approval of the agenda. Vice Chair Pro Tem.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion is made by Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler, supported by Commissioner Ray. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Agenda is approved. We'll go to item eight, under presentations, we're going to conduct the balance of our interviews for the Aeronautics Board. Get my self back in here. Thank you for your patience. All right. Thank you, I just wanted to pull that up so I can bring up our candidates in, of no particular order, so just as presented in the packet. We'll take up an interview with Mr. Doug Johnson. Mr. Johnson, you're welcome to join us at the podium. I usually offer, if you'd like to sit as well, that is up to you. Welcome. So on the base of the microphone, something with the person on it, that'll turn your mic on. Welcome.
Welcome.
Good. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. So as is usually our custom, we did not do in our first meeting, we'll introduce ourselves as we go around. I'm Commissioner Strabs, I'm chairperson, I represent District 2 in the, in county. And I'm just going to lead us off with our first question, and then we'll go to my left this time, since we went the other way last time. All right, so could you tell me what you know about this, this authority? Have you been to any meetings? And why would you like to serve on it?
Yeah, I've been involved in the airport, going on almost 30 years now. And been to quite a few different airport board meetings. I've also, I still serve on the advisory, like Snow Committee, Safety Committee. So I'm very active in the, in the, in the board, and I'd like to participate.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Pro Tem.
Thank you, Chair. Jeff Hepler, District 7. Cooper, Richland, Ross, and Charleston area. My question is, what do you expect the board to do for the community?
Really just oversee, make sure the airport continues to thrive, grow, and is accessible to everyone in the community. I think we've got it, I'm obviously biased, I think we have an excellent jewel of an airport out there. We've got an excellent aviation environment in this county, and I want to continue to see that grow.
Thank you.
Hello there and welcome, Montise Morales, representing District Number 3. Have you had any diversity, equity, and inclusion training? If so, tell us about it. Please share with you what you have learned from working with people of different cultures.
Absolutely. Through college, I've actually got a social science degree in criminal justice, so I've taken numerous courses in ethnic minor relations through my corporate involvement, executive management involvement. You know, I was responsible for putting programs together and making sure they're implemented. And as far as, you know, my experience has been overwhelmingly positive. I believe diversity makes us better. I really do.
Hi there, I'm Abigail Wheeler, I represent District 4. What education, personal, or work experience do you have related to working with this board?
Currently, I'm the Great Lakes Region Director for Cirrus Aircraft. I've been there for the past six years. I've been a pilot since 1995. I'm a certified flight instructor, both for that and instrument. And been involved, kind of uniquely, on all aspects of the airport except maybe maintenance. In my corporate years, I was a million miler plus diamond with Delta. Now with Cirrus, I primarily fly on the general aviation side of that. So I've been able to see the airport working, you know, from those two different angles.
Good evening, I'm Tammy Ray, I represent District 1.
Evening, Commissioner.
And my question is, what is the greatest strength that you bring to the board?
I think probably, just from my past experience, leadership and collaboration. I've been accused of being able to look at both sides of an issue and move things forward.
Commissioner Gissler, you'd like the next one?
Thank you, Doug. I'm John Gissler, I represent five of the 15 rural townships in the county, so it's a lot of farm country and that sort of thing.
Evening, Commissioner.
Can you go to the meetings, and can we count on you to attend regularly?
Absolutely. I think I've seen you at a couple of them too, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm hard to miss.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Speaking of the mic off your.
Yeah, I should, and this isn't a slight on anybody, but I don't go to Florida or anything, and so yeah, I'm here here, absolutely.
Hi, I'm Wendy Mazur, District 8. Do you have any questions for us?
What are your, you know, I'm here to, you know, would be just a kind of a freshman board member. Any type, I mean, any way, as far as what you want to see me support for the county. Your vision's as far as what you want to see. I also, just recently, I'm on the, I just got admitted to the K-RISA Board. I think there's a lot of good educational opportunities that we could leverage the airport to use. I'm excited about what's going in over here on I-94. And I've kind of the philosophy of, you know, learn, earn, and return, and I'm getting into the return phase of my life now. So do you have anything that's, hey, I'd really like to see, you know, other than we're getting a longer runway, which is going to be great? Okay? Yes, Commissioner?
Mr. Morales.
Oh, sorry.
I need to be recognized by the chair, I guess we see what role you're going to run for. The chair, collaboration, all the things. So as an educator, I just recently, of course, you know, we, we help push the village through and all those things, I just went out to K-RISA. And one of the things that I think we struggle with, with, is with persons of color who are pilots. And so since you mentioned that, a lot of times working at the college, especially when they start at the community college level, coming from high school with that transition, they got three years before they get to WMU to maybe get into that program and then be able to afford flight time. Do you, if you're on there, what would you be thinking about, you know, connecting with more students to give them that, afford them that opportunity, and maybe, this could be the wrong word, but having a rebate program, hey, you go to K-RISA, you go to Valley, you transfer to WMU, and we help to pay for that flight time. I think with our youth, that's the biggest concern and challenge is that they get through the program, but then when it's time to get those hours in, they can't.
Absolutely. Two things I would address with that. First of all, aviation is a huge industry, it's got a big tent. You don't necessarily need to be a pilot. Right now, we're screaming for technicians. We need airframe, we need engine, we need especially avionics. So it's not just necessarily flying, there's a lot of other areas. Like my daughter, for instance, she's an ops assistant now with Colletta Air. She doesn't fly. So there's a lot of good jobs. Aviation is expanding. With all the resources we have here in Kalamazoo, we really are special, and I travel all around the country. We have a lot of resources to promote that, in my opinion. There's a lot of diversity programs out there now, Cirrus being one of them, but like the Aviate Academy with United, that they're able to address that problem, exactly what you're talking about, because yeah, flight time is not inexpensive.
And a follow-up question, just with all the air traffic control issues that we're seeing with this current administration, how would you, what would you bring to that board to ensure that anyone flying in and out of Kalamazoo County are landing and exiting safe?
I know quite a few of those individuals. Rest assured, we're in good hands with those folks. We are a training facility here, Training Tower. Most people don't know this, but Great Lakes Approach, which is, covers almost the whole state of Michigan, is based here in Kalamazoo. Which is another resource I don't think I tell people enough about. But obviously, they're going to be, I, I, I wouldn't worry, there's enough programs in sight. I think, once again, this is an area of growth that we could hopefully get our youth interested in. Good paying jobs, and we definitely need more individuals there too. The, the security, in my opinion, if there's any kind of lapse there, is we just got overworked controllers.
Great, thank you for those questions. Thank you so much for taking the time.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. You too. All right, the next interview we'll conduct with Mr. Mark Wies. Welcome.
Thank you.
All right. So you're going to hear that same set of questions again.
Okay.
Keeps it interesting. All the incumbent questions, my apologies. I'm glad I've got a team that helps keep me somewhat focused some of the time. All right. So not sure, we, we did them earlier this evening, but maybe you were not here. So our first question for you is, why is it you're interested in serving for another term on the authority?
Well, I've been on the board since 2012, and I've often thought it to be a very interesting group of people. The oversight of the, of the operation of the airport is very interesting. It covers a lot of different areas. Everything from finance, personnel, some environmental stuff as well. It's just a unique thing. And I agree with my predecessor in saying that the airport itself is quite the crown jewel for the community. Something that I mentioned back in 2012 during my first interview, and I still agree today, is that the airport is the first thing that people see when they're new to Kalamazoo, when they fly in. Whether it's for business, whether it's for family, whether it's for, you know, attending some of the local museums in the area, that is the first view people have of Kalamazoo. And I thought it was, it's a wonderful building, wonderful structure. I think we do a very good job at welcoming people to the community. And I've felt very proud that I was part of the group that has continued to do that. So that's, I enjoy the time I spend there, and I would like to continue for another term at least.
Thank you. Vice Chair.
Have you had any diversity, equity, inclusion training? And if so, could you tell us about it? Please share what you've learned from working with people of different cultures.
Well, I'm currently in the Director of Environmental Health and Safety at Western Michigan University. And I've been in that job for 11 years. We do various forms of DEI training, various forms of cultural education training. The university itself, I consider a world-class institution. It draws people from all over the world, Asia, Africa, European groups, people from Latin America, all sorts of groups come there. Not only students, we have a lot of foreign students. I think we have over, over 2,000 foreign students. We also have a lot of faculty and staff members that come from various places all over the world, as well as various parts of the United States. We draw student, our student body draws from all over, everywhere, all 51 states. So to me, that in itself creates a wonderful mixing, you know, melting pot of different cultures, ideas, concerns. In the 11 years that I've been there, it's, it's been an opportunity to learn how other people view things. Prior to that, I worked for a Japanese company in Battle Creek, and that gave me some insight into how other people from around the world approach things differently. So it causes you to reflect on your own assumptions. And it causes you to develop patience and understanding and create an environment where you can inquire as to why things are and why people believe what they believe.
Thank you. What is the greatest strength as a board member? And tell us how you take part in the work of this board.
Greatest strength? I think I, I think I bring quite a bit of experience from various aspects. One, again, is my, my 30-year career doing environmental health and safety work, which covers, there's certain aspects of what happens at the airport, for example, extending the runway. There was some different environmental stuff that was done that I was able to contribute to the base understanding of the entire committee from my experiences that I've had in other jobs and other, other education. On the flip side of that, there's a tremendous amount of skills that other people on that board have that give me an opportunity to learn as well. So every, it seems like every board meeting I go to, I learn something new somewhere. And it's kind of like a lifetime of continuing education with different groups, different people, different concerns, all focused around what, what I consider to be the crown jewel of the county.
Commissioner Gissler.
Thank you, Chair. Excuse me, good to see you, Mark. I, my question is, do you attend meetings regularly? I see you there all the time, so you must be.
I would say yes. In the last two years, I think I've missed one meeting. Yeah, my, my attendance is pretty solid. The administration of the airport does a good job publishing the dates of the meetings. I think one thing they've done very well since I started was had the meetings available now through Teams or WebEx, which even if I couldn't be a voting member, it still would allow me, if I couldn't make a meeting, to, to attend virtually, which allows me to absorb the information and possibly contribute anything that I might be able to. So yeah, I, I, my, my attendance record sort of speaks for itself, I would say.
I think so. Thank you.
Look at her looking.
Do you have any questions for us?
Uh, no, not really questions as much as I make a comment. I do appreciate uh, what I would consider is the county commissioner's support for the airport. There are many situations that come up in our interaction with uh, the airport administration. They speak very highly of the county commissioners. Uh, I know there's a lot of support in a lot of the ancillary areas that people don't necessarily think about when it comes to the board. But when it comes to the airport, things like human resources, legal review and things like that. So um, instead of a question, I guess I would say thank you for the support you've given us at the airport uh, as we, as we run it to the best of our abilities.
Great. Thank you so much for taking time speaking with us and for your service on the Aeronautics Board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. We'll move to our last interview this evening, Mr. Greg Hamel. If I said that correctly, I apologize if I didn't. I got it. All right.
Good evening.
Good evening. Okay. So um, again, now this is the same set of questions. You tell me uh, why you want to serve for another term uh, on this authority?
Uh, yes, I think uh, I've been on the board since twenty thirteen. Uh, certainly uh, served as the Chairman of the Aeronautics Board. Um, so uh, I've enjoyed um, each term that I've, I've served. I see the uh, things moving forward with the airport. I've seen a couple of different directors um, in my time there. So uh, we, we have some things that are ongoing. Uh, for example, our runway extension. Um, I'd love to see that uh, come to fruition. That's been a long process on our end. Not without a lot of effort uh, by the board to uh, to help further that along. So I would like to, like to continue that uh, that participation.
Great. Thank you. Vice Chair Pro Tem, will you take the second?
Thank you, Chair. I'd be happy to. Uh, Jeff Hepler, District Seven. Have you had any diversity, equity, inclusion training? If so, please tell us about it. Please share what you have learned from working with people of different cultures.
So I currently uh, serve as the Director of the Business Travel Center for Whirlpool. So our corporate flight department. So as a people leader with the company, um, I think Whirlpool's been a longstanding um, company from a, from a DEI um, perspective internally. So um, they helped to facilitate a lot of that training within our organization. Um, and, and what I would say, how it translates then for me and that organization is obviously the people I work with uh, or, or work for me, report to me. Um, additionally, outside of that, I think there's a benefit on the aviation side. Uh, we're an international company. Uh, we, we travel all around the world. We have people come in from all around the world. Um, not only of our customers, but also our employees. Um, so interfacing with those um, uh, different uh, individuals from different countries, um, their backgrounds, um, I think it's very helpful to uh, to understand that. I also do a little bit of uh, part-time instructing at Western at their College of Aviation. Um, we see a number of international students there as well. So I've had the opportunity to, to interface with students from uh, again, from different countries um, as they try to interface into the world of aviation. So I think that's, that's very helpful in that regard.
Commissioner Morales. Alrighty, welcome.
Thank you.
Montise Morales, District Number Three. What is the greatest strength as a board member? And tell us how you take part of the work in this board.
So I think uh, my greatest strength that I bring to the board is, is uh, you know, thirty-plus years in, in aviation. I'm a pilot. I'm also an aircraft technician, so I see both sides of, of that. Uh, end of aviation, which is uh, probably the two big factors. Um, in my role as a Director of Aviation, I also have the, my scheduling department is a, a big factor. So when I look at how our operation runs, that's, you know, a, a, a play-in with the airport. Um, I've also uh, participated not only at Kalamazoo over the past thirty years. Um, physically, whether I operate an aircraft myself out of Kalamazoo, travel on the airlines. Uh, also, I work for a company out of Detroit, at Detroit Metro, so it's located at airports. I've seen the larger airport activity. Um, currently at Benton Harbor, an uncontrolled field. A little bit different than uh, Kalamazoo, but still very important to our business um, and how that airport serves uh, um, the Benton Harbor-St. Joe area. So um, I think, again, the Kalamazoo Airport, serving Southwest Michigan as a whole, um, serves a really important part to, to what we do uh, on the Aeronautics Board. Um, and I feel that my background really helps to uh, to further that goal. Thank you.
Hi there. Good evening.
Evening.
Um, do you go to the meetings on a regular basis?
I do. I see Commissioner Gisler there on a regular basis as well. So thanks for letting him attend. But yeah, uh, attendance is no problem.
Great. And then lastly, do you have any questions for us?
Um, you know, I think, again, I'll, I'll go back to Commissioner Gisler. It's nice that there's representation from the um, County Board of Commissioners that comes to our meetings and hopefully provides feedback to you on, on what we accomplish. Um, I would encourage anybody else here that, if you want to know what's going on at the airport, feel free to attend our meetings. So I think in saying that, though, what's, what are the, what are the expectations for the County Board of Commissioners for the Aeronautics Board? Um, I think Commissioner Gisler does a great job with that. Um, and I don't want to say that he's biased, right? But uh, but if there's other things that, that you folks see that maybe don't think is expressed, uh, we'd love to know that, so.
Commissioner Morales. Thank you, Chair. I'll just say that whenever you have any more promotions, he's your guy. We have plenty of coupons.
Yeah, sounds good. Yeah, he likes, he likes that. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you. I, I think we're, you know, we're all just interested in the airport continuing to grow, to be vibrant, uh, to be flexible and uh, expand services as appropriate in many ways I hadn't even thought of and considered uh, and learned about tonight. So thank you for your time. Uh, we appreciate um, your service on the board and taking time and talking with us.
No, thank you. Appreciate the time.
Thank you. Okay. All right, Commissioner. So um, we interviewed uh, three incumbents this evening. Mr. Weiss, Mr. Hemlack, and Ms. Miller. And then uh, our new applicant, Mr. Johnson. So we have three vacancies. We have four very qualified and uh, passionate candidates and so open for some deliberation on thoughts. Vice Chair.
Um, I, I've probably biased in this, but I know Nicole Miller. I think she does a wonderful job. Um, I know that she's um, extremely attentive. Every time there's an issue with the county and the city of Portland, believe me, she's calling me. Um, but um, that being said, you're absolutely right. We've got four great candidates. And the airport is gonna go through very interesting, all airports, regional airports, are gonna go through a very interesting transition two to three years from now. As airline services change their sort of funding model from, instead of getting their money from their passengers, they try to get the money directly from the communities that their, their airports are. Um, it's gonna make it real difficult to compete. Um, so you know, as we look down the road, three years, five years down the road, I mean, absolutely need that air, uh, that runway expansion because we wouldn't be able to even have the size of aircraft that we need to get to Chicago and Detroit if we did. Um, but we're, we're gonna have a real serious sort of question that we're gonna have to ask ourselves. The airport authority is gonna have to ask that themselves. Where do we see ourselves in three to five years? How do we compete as a regional airport without the millions and millions of sort of subsidies that the Grand Rapids Airport gets? Um, where are we going to be in a position three to years, five years from now? So I think who we pick here is gonna be certainly reflective of that. I'll put my shtick in for Nicole. I thought um, Mr. Johnson did a really good interview as well. Um, but you know, look, as long as Nicole's on there, I'm, I'm good.
Commissioner Morales. Thank you, Chair. Um, I would love to see Kalamazoo County grow like Grand Rapids. I do frequent Grand Rapids Airport. I like it better than Chicago or Detroit. And I can get some straight flights to places without having to have overlays and things like that. Um, for me, um, I think Miller brings that extra part of knowing, you know, what we can do when we come to Kalamazoo. So I like that part of what she brought to the table. You know, from a fresh standpoint, I think Doug is the plug, like talking about K Risa. You, you speak in my language with education. Or the members, the incumbents that came in, this is a hard call. Um, and I appreciate all of your service, but if I had to pick, it would be um, Doug, Greg, and Miller for me.
Commissioner Meeser.
Okay. Well, I agree. I think we have four excellent candidates, and this is tough. Um, but I think my top three would be Doug Johnson, Mark, I think it's Weiss. Is that Weiss? Weiss? Okay. And Greg Hamel. So those would be my top three.
Thank you, Commissioner Meeser. Commissioner Gisler? Commissioner Wheeler?
Yeah, I'm very torn. Um, and just for context, uh, Greg has stepped up as the Chair of that board, just so we all know, um, if I'm not mistaken. Okay. Um, uh, this is really tough. I guess for a matter of um, consensus, I will concur with Montise.
Thank you. Commissioner Gisler?
Thank you, Chair. I will make a comment, and that is that, and I don't want to write checks for Gil, but I don't think Gil's gonna run the next time he's up for reappointment. And therefore, whoever doesn't get the nod tonight, for heaven's sakes, don't go far. You know, hang around because we're gonna have a long-term. I think Gil uh, Culver was one of the original Airport Authority members. And I think he's, and I'm guessing at this, he may be ready to say, time to move on to my next career. Uh, I, I, I do believe that's the case. So whoever we don't pick tonight, for heaven's sakes, let's hang in there and uh, your turn is coming. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll, I'll just chime in. Um, in particular, from Mr. Johnson's interview, I just learned a lot. He got me thinking about the airport in different ways. Um, and I think, looking at the headwinds in front of us, I mean, it's gonna be pretty important um, for what we do going forward. Um, so I'd like to uh, suggest Mr. Johnson, uh, Ms. Miller, and uh, Mr. Hamel. Would be my preferences there.
Those would be my three as well.
All right. So I'd entertain a motion.
I would move that we appoint Nicole Miller, Doug Johnson, and Greg Hamel to the Airport Advisory Board.
Motion made by Vice Chair Taylor, supported by Commissioner Wheeler. Is there any further discussion? Again, thank you to all of the candidates for your time, for your service. I appreciate that very much. All those in favor signify by saying hi. Hi? Am I opposed? That motion carries. Okay. Let's see. Item number nine, we have public hearings. Open the annual public hearing for the proposed twenty twenty-six budget, Kalamazoo County, uh, for Kalamazoo County. Anyone wishing to address the board on this public hearing? I saw someone thinking about it over there, so. Please join us at the podium.
I just want to make sure, Chair, that you mean to address the budget.
Yes, my apologies if I was not clear. Thank you, Prosecutor.
Um, may it please the Commission Chair, Vice Chair, Vice Chair Pro Tem, other members of the Commissioner. Uh, I've been before this, this board many times over the years, arguing for increases in my budget at the Prosecutor's Office. I'm not here today to do that. I'm not asking you for an increase. I'm not asking you for additional positions. What I am asking you is for maintaining our current staffing levels. We do have vacancies, but those vacancies are being filled. At the time information was gathered regarding vacancies, since then, two of the Assistant Prosecutor positions have been filled. We have interviews yet this week for the other two remaining Assistant Prosecutor positions. We expect those to be filled. We presented a plan to administration and the board. It was originally scheduled to be on the agenda today, but it's been moved um, to your agenda for the twenty-first uh, regarding legal assistance and a, a plan for uh, position eliminations, creations that will better serve the Prosecutor's Office moving forward with regard to those. And I also want to point out that in the twenty-three budget for twenty-four, the state of Michigan appropriated money to local prosecutor's office through a high crimes community grant. It gave Kalamazoo a million dollars. The condition on that money is that there be no reduction in the Prosecutor's Office budget. That money was also appropriated in the following year's budget. There was a snafu in the language that has now since been corrected with the adoption of the budget this week and Governor Whitmer's signature today. That also provides for another million dollars for the County Prosecutor's Office. And in this year's budget that was adopted, yet another million. All conditioned on us not having a reduction in our budget. And a reduction in staffing will be viewed by the state as a reduction in our budget. I'm not asking for more. I'm asking that we maintain our current positions. That money will be used for additional staffing. That money will be used for training. That money will be used for recruitment. That money will be used for retention. It will be used for other tools to assist our office in addressing our pending caseloads. And all of that money that comes from the state comes without any cost from the county. There is no matching dollars here. This is just a million dollars being appropriated by the state to the Prosecutor's Office, but it is conditioned upon no reduction in our budget, which means no reduction in our staffing, because that will be viewed as a reduction in our budget, because the state will see that as me using their money to pay for the positions that you've eliminated. I just don't want us to see, I just don't want to see Kalamazoo County fall into the mistake of not addressing our vacancies in a way that costs us money. Thank you.
Air feasibility study that was read earlier, uh, just so you guys know in our, excuse me, aware, uh, there is a five oh one C three being formed uh, to work on that. Uh, it's taking a little bit longer than I wanted to. Uh, I don't feel like spending my own money to get a lawyer, so I'm working with another nonprofit who I met with today and they kind of, I thought originally they were gonna help me form five oh one C three. Uh, but after, at the end of the meeting, they're like, well, here you go. This is, good luck. I was like, oh, all right, perfect. Uh, so anyways, uh, in the works of that, I have been for a little while now. Uh, but I just wanted you guys to know that, that, that is happening. Uh, there is something going on in the background. Well, not the background, but uh, trying to make that a reality. Uh, we know, I know that the, the government can't, I'm not gonna write you guys a check for the fair, right? It's just not gonna happen. Uh, but I'd probably write the, yeah, yeah. I'd probably write the five oh one C three a check uh, to help fundraise for that. So uh, I just want everybody to know, kind of start to make that a little bit more public. It's been public in the background a little bit. But uh, that is happening, um, and, and looking forward to the continuation of that. Uh, we will need the county's support to get that off the ground, right? It's not a simple, uh, it's not a simple thing to do. I don't know what I'm getting myself into, so tell me to run now if I need to. Uh, but uh, so that is happening. Uh, I, I feel like uh, that it's good for you guys to know, after that feasibility study. Um, she did talk to me briefly. Uh, then I was busy planning a wedding, so I never really responded to her. So that's my bad. She was gonna present that to you guys, I think. Uh, but uh, so yeah, so that is happening in the background. So, thank you. She was gonna present that to you guys, I think, uh, but, uh, so yeah, so that is happening in the background, so, thank you.
Welcome.
Chair, Vice Chairs, Commissioners, I'm, I'm assuming we moved into public time?
We're still in the public hearing for the budget at this time. Public comment is next. Would you like to speak to the budget?
No, so I need to wait. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Probably stay right there. Is there anyone else wishing to, uh, address the public hearing? Administration, is there anyone online? Thank you. Okay, so let me close the public hearing. I got to use this extra tonight a lot. And now I'm gonna bring us to public comment, item 10, so I'm just gonna read, uh, an intro, um, so you can interact in person by phone at the, uh, number stated earlier this evening. Press star three to join the queue. You can speak during both of our public comment periods in this meeting. If you're on the phone, you must press star three again to join the queue after the first public comment period ends, as this is the first opportunity of up to three minutes to address us in a professional and respectful manner. Once you're recognized, please share your name and where you're from, and welcome.
Thank you. So, I'm Roger Teneer. I live at 7125 East ML in Comstock Township. And I'm here to talk about, uh, and ask some questions about the proposed purchase of the downtown McDonald's property for $9 million to build a new, larger county admin building. My question is, what is the taxable value or the SEV of this piece of property? I asked, um, a reputable source, and this was shared with me, that the amount was right around $700,000. So generally, what you do is take that figure and times it times two, which would be 1.4 million, which seems like a reasonable amount for that piece of property. So, why are we offering six times more for property that is now worth that much? Seems like a real windfall for the McDonald's Corporation and/or others who may be benefiting from this sale. The question is, too, have the county, has the county gotten at least two independent appraisals for this parcel of property? If not, why not? So, um, up until about three years ago or so, the county had plenty of room to expand next to the new courthouse. The county owned all the property all the way up to Westnich. And my, another question I have, hopefully somebody can back, get back to me with some answers, is how much did we get paid by the developers of the new arena for these two parcels of property? And then just another thought, if our current admin building is too small, can we move a couple of departments to other locations within the county? Such as, um, the Drain Commission office, maybe could move to the Road Commission. Seems like a natural fit to me. If we need more court space, I, I believe we still have court space on Gull Road. You can correct me if I'm wrong. Why not use it? So, I urge you as a board to explore more than just this one option. Be fiscally responsible. Our taxes are high enough. And, um, just what, what a lot of people have shared with me, they, they really don't like to come downtown to do business, um, or shop, or let alone drive the streets of Kalamazoo. And I've heard that from, from many people. So, I pray that you as a commission, uh, will pray for wisdom and discernment before you make any decisions. And please make sure that you're representing all the people of Kalamazoo, not just your own interest, but the interest of all people. So, thank you for your time, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to make public comment? Welcome.
Thank you, Chair. I don't look Chair, Vice Chair, Vice Chair Pro Tem. My name is Mary Balkama, and I just wanted to recognize the CEO of the Family Promise, Cheryl Sutches in our, um, midst, and you know, we have that contract on our agenda. She's a graduate of the University of Michigan. Then she worked in Grand Rapids, and now she leads the national organization. They have over 200 affiliates across the country, so we are honored to have her, and we are also thrilled that this item is moving on the agenda tonight. It's a really, really big deal, and it's another step in opening the family shelter that you have supported from the beginning, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome. Yep, a little with that person on it. There you go.
Um, good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, um, Vice Chair Pro Tem and Commissioners, um, it's nice to be here, see you here. Uh, my name is Tony Kennedy, and I am here under the veteran lens cap. Um, I wanted to share with you that this eve, uh, this weekend, October 11th, we have an event at the American Legion Post 36. Uh, it's 1920 East Kilgore Road, um, and so what I would like to do is invite the Commissioners to come out, because in order to be able to help our constituents and in our community, we have to know what's out there, what's fresh, what's new, and knowing that we have resources that are coming into our community, um, the VA is coming, we have horses, we have, you know, the Vet Center, different, um, resources that are there to help veterans. And there are resources there that also are, um, looking to expand, um, their information into the Veterans Lens. So I have some flyers that I will hand over to my left so they, they can share. I'm really hoping, thank you. Um, I'm really hoping, um, to see some of you there. It's 12 to 4, as most of you know. When I do events, it's nice to sleep in sometimes on a Saturday, and by leaving at 4 o'clock, we still have an opportunity to, um, catch another event or have some family time, et cetera. So, we are going to be doing haircuts, there'll be a me, uh, um, there'll be meals. We have a band that volunteered to play, it's a blues band, um, which is kind of cool. So I encourage you all to try to come, um, bring a family member, bring a vet with you. Um, learn some things about what's out there right now, especially in our climate. We don't know what's happening, what resources are available, et cetera. And the only way we're gonna be able to advocate for absolutely anyone is if we too are informed. So I would love to invite you there, and, um, thank you for your time, and I appreciate everything that you do. Take care.
Thank you.
Hello again, Jane Gosch, Discover Kalamazoo. Um, a few weeks ago, it was announced that Wings West was closing due to an ICE failure, um, and that, uh, Greenleaf Hospitality intended to permanently close Wings West. And at that time, Discover Kalamazoo got all of the ICE user groups together to understand, um, you know, how can we work together to see how much ICE does this community need and what would be the potential paths forward? Today, it was announced that a company called Black Bear Sports is purchasing Wings West with the intent to reopen it. They own, um, ICE facilities across the country, including, I believe this will be their sixth ICE facility here in West Michigan. Um, we once again got the, got the user groups together to, um, once we were aware of the news, to understand, uh, what are the implications of this and for our plans going forward. Um, and, uh, today we issued a press release, all of the user groups together with Discover Kalamazoo, with our commitment to working collaboratively with Black Bear, and, um, to still conduct a feasibility study so that we can understand what is the true need of ICE in our community and what are the right, the right paths going forward. Uh, because we foresee a world in 2028 where we might be going from six sheets of ICE to potentially as few as four here in Kalamazoo County, which is better than two, which is what it might have looked like a few weeks ago, um, but still a reduction, and, uh, I just wanted to let, let you know that, that there is, uh, things are looking better than they were, than they were a couple of weeks ago, and we are working very collaboratively with the ICE users to figure out the future. Thank you.
Thank you. My hockey-loving brother will be so excited. Any other comments? Administrator, is there anyone online? All right, I'm gonna end. That first public comment will move to item 11. This is for the consent agenda. Entertain a motion. Motion made by Vice Chair, supported by Vice Chair Pro Tem, for the consent agenda items to be voted on at one time by a roll call vote. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Vice Chair Taylor?
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler?
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu? Commissioner Kissler?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazer?
Yes.
Commissioner Morales?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Chair Straps?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. All right. The work in front of us. We'll go to item 12. Uh, annual meeting items. Our first is item 2025-970. This is our request for the approval of a resolution to levy.
So move.
Motion made by Vice Chair Taylor, supported by Commissioner Wheeler. Is there any further discussion? Clerk, will you, seeing none, sorry, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Wheeler?
Yes.
Commissioner DeLu? Commissioner Kissler?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazer?
Yes.
Commissioner Morales?
Yes.
Commissioner Ray?
Yes.
Chair Straps?
Yes.
Vice Chair Taylor?
Yes.
You have eight yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Item 2025-971, request to move forward to approve of a resolution to adopt the 2026 budget for Kalamazoo County to the October 21st, 2025 meeting. Motion made by Vice Chair Pro, sorry, Vice Chair Taylor, supported by Commissioner Wheeler. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying hi. Hi? Any opposed? That motion carries. Item 2025-972, request to move forward, the approval of the apportionment report to October 21st, 2025 meeting. Motion made by Commissioner Wheeler, supported by Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying hi. Hi? Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, we'll go to, where's my, my place there a second? Item 2025-973, request to move forward, the adoption of a resolution to apportion Advalorm taxes to the October 21st, 2025 meeting. Motion made by Commissioner Wheeler, supported by Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying hi. Hi? Any opposed? That motion carries. To item 2025-1129, request for approval of two appointments to the Kalamazoo County Board of Canvassers, Vice Chair, uh, Taylor.
Uh, yes, thank you, Chair. I would make a motion to approve Daniel Lundgren as the Republican appointee and Vince Laveri, Lavieri, as the Democratic appointee. These are both incumbents.
Thank you. Motion is made by Vice Chair Taylor, supported by Vice Chair Pro Tem Hepler. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying hi. Hi? Any opposed? That motion carries. Congratulations on your reappointments. Item 13, unfinished business and general orders. I have none. Item 14, new business, non-consent items. We have none. Item 15, this is the final opportunity for a public comment this evening. Call the number as stated, press star three, up to three minutes. Please state your name, where you're from, once recognized. Anyone wish to make a public comment? Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Vice Chair Pro Tem, Commissioners. My name is Cheryl Shook, and I'm the CEO at Family Promise. I am thrilled to be here tonight. Um, I am a born and raised, um, Michigander and lived in Kalamazoo most of my life. I'm a proud Marin giant and, um, very excited. Um, my family still lives here. My, my dad was a longtime professor at Western, and my mom is a Kalamazoo Public School teacher. So, really excited to be able to do some work here and in this community. Family Promise has operated for almost 40 years in more than 43 states with over 200 locations during that time. We've served more than a million people, and by the year 2030, we'll have over a million children have been in our care nationwide. So we are incredibly passionate about serving families with children, very passionate about partnering with this community. We've seen already in our short time, over just the last couple of months, um, an incredible commitment of this community to ensure that families with children have a place to call home here. And we are thrilled, um, to see this commitment tonight, and really excited and looking forward to the partnerships with, um, the, the rest of the organizations here in Kalamazoo, um, and throughout the county that support the families here, and, uh, very excited, uh, to have a long-term, um, place and honored, um, to be a part, a small part of that work you all are doing. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Welcome.
Hello, my name is Gwendolyn Hooker. I am the CEO of Helping Other People Exceed Through Navigation, and I am so excited, I can hardly contain myself, because I, um, people know my struggle. Um, this project has been through a whole pandemic, and so we are super, super excited for the funding, um, unanimously decided, um, by this commission so that we can get some more tiny houses up and going for, um, justice impacted people. Um, I am just almost moved to tears, but I'm gonna try not to cry, I got the wrong mascara on. But I am just super excited with the way that Phase 1 is going and the work that we're doing with the people that are staying there. Um, we have someone in trucking school right now, we have someone that's getting ready to move and buy a house, um, and the other person is in school, so, um, this project is actually doing more than what even I envisioned, and I normally go big and think big. And so I'm super excited that we're gonna have the opportunity to, um, continue in this very critical work. Super, uh, grateful for the work of, uh, Housing Director Mary Balkama and Willa, Willa, um, and just all of the, you know, work that they, um, supported and helped me as we, you know, kind of pieced all of these things together. So thank you so very much. Um, I am extremely grateful, and I look forward to seeing you all, so thanks.
Thank you.
Also, October is National Bullying Prevention Month, and so, you know, take time to be kind. It doesn't cost anything, it's totally free. Um, we're having our fifth annual retreat for resilient justice this weekend, which is a great opportunity for youths that have been impacted by, um, bullying and gun violence to come out, put their phones down and plug into nature, plug into, um, social, uh, communication, and just really getting out there and just team building and having a great time, and also doing some conflict resolution, um, and learning critical skills to how to manage a lot of the traumas that they, that they have went through in a productive, a positive way. So if you want to come out, we're there Friday to Sunday, um, and I'm sure everybody has flyers by now, because I've sent them and emailed them and put them everywhere. So if you don't and you want more information, um, please reach out to me or go on our website or Facebook. We're everywhere. Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you. Thought she was coming back for a third time, but no. Is there anyone else? Administration, anyone online? Thank you. All right, we will close that public comment. Now we'll move to our final items. Uh, item 16, this is a report of officers, bodies and the administrator controller. Um, we've had a long meeting this evening, a lot to digest, a lot of work, um, a lot of people advocating and participating. A lot of people advocating and participating. Public comment tonight, people involved in our public hearings, that's exciting stuff. I mean, boy, that says a lot about what I think is fun, I guess. But to see when a community participates in its democracy, let's be mindful of how critical that participation is and how vulnerable it is. We're now awake and alert to the responsibility to be contributing members to our society and to our democracy as individuals. And this is just a little example in a little local government of how that happens, how different perspectives come together to get to outcomes that move all of us forward. And it can be done in a way that's functional and cooperative and professional. And, uh, you know, that seems like a tall order sometimes for government. Doesn't have to be, especially not if we demand it to be so. In light of participatory democracy, October the 18th, there will be community participation. If you have concerns about how our constitution is being treated currently, it's time. It's, it's time to use your voice. It is time. Well past time. I will speak in brief to some of the comments regarding our, our property acquisition downtown. And I do want to reassure the community of a couple of things. The, the board takes very seriously its role in being appropriate stewards of our resources. We had exhaustive discussions. We evaluated a number of options. And I think dialogue here had been happening, I would guess, nearly two years' worth of time. Overall evaluation thinking. We had a facilities master plan completed, to really help us identify the needs so that we can be functional and productive going forward. It's also, you know, important when we hear a public comment about people not wanting to be in the downtown of our community, not wanting to drive here and shop here and work here. And that's exactly what we want to see resolved. We want people here. We want people shopping and working and being in community together. And that's why we made a conscious choice to make our investment in the center of the city. Beyond it being statutorily required that we have presence in the county seat of Kalamazoo County. So I will follow up directly with our former colleague Roger Tunnier on his other concerns addressed, but, um, you know, that was a strategic decision. McDonald's had lost its franchise and we either took action to develop or someone else would. And this building is not going to be tenable for us going forward. So that, that time was primed. With that, we did a lot of stuff tonight. It was good. I'm so excited about Family Promise. I'm so excited Gwendolyn's back there too. We did housing allocations tonight. Cal Recovery, I mean, Willa and Mary were recognized recently for their work by Community Home Works for the excellent effort going on in our housing department. It's a pleasure to get to collaborate on all of that work and to help champion what we're doing on housing and so many more things. So I think that's enough. I'll stop rambling with that. Vice Chair.
Thank you. And to reiterate or just to exemplify the fact that there's a lot of people that don't want to come downtown was the decision maker for me to reinvest and not give up on downtown, but actually to reinvest in downtown, not give up. That's, that was, that was the decision making for me. But yeah, the Chair is absolutely right. We did a lot of stuff tonight. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the brownfield redevelopment report that we have. We've got one of the best brownfields in the state of Michigan. The size of our revolving fund, the size of what we're able to do. We can do way bigger projects. A lot of other communities similar size because we invested decades ago into a brownfield and we built those tiffs up. And we're now collecting on so many of those, we have opportunities for site remediation for lots of different things that can make us a better place for businesses to look to develop in. Also, the, did a couple of things on the consent agenda that I want to just mention too. We did a DTRF loan to Discover Kalamazoo because we have problems with hotels that don't, that think their taxes are more of a suggestion as opposed to something they actually have to pay. We've put in teeth that those taxes will be put onto their property tax bill. The Discover Kalamazoo is not the only organization that receives those accommodations tax. We also give accommodations tax to our Parks Department. And I think there's a small stipend for the treasurer as well. But as we look at that and if we ever have to do another DTRF loan again, I would highly recommend that we do the whole thing and then make everybody whole, including the Parks Department. I don't think the Parks Department was in as dire need, but you know, as, as we develop that out. Also canvassers, we, we appointed two canvassers that will certify elections, both parties. They won't play political gamesmanship for either political party. And I think that's an important testament to what our democracy is. And we say, uh, what was it, to the veteran, I'm sorry, I got all these notes here. But a little local government can do big things. Look at the state. They had to pass a continuing resolution. It took them months and years. We're able to, with the excellent job of our Administrator Controller and his staff, we're able to put together a budget that maybe all of us don't think, oh, this is 100% everything we want. But you know what? I think everybody here would agree that it's in the high 90s. And I think that is a good testament of what compromise and what trust in our professional administrator and trust in ourselves looks like. As we move on and on and we're able to do bigger and better things, specifically with the airport. We had, we had four great applicants for our airport. Two years from now, a year from now, somewhere in that, that time, we're going to be making a huge decision on what the airport looks like in three to five years in Kalamazoo County. And having these people in place will help us guide that decision-making process. So, you know, and I, last, I can't say, Deputy Kelly, thank you. And Bo, it's time for bed.
Vice Chair Pro Tem?
Thank you Chair. Yes, we had a very full plate tonight, this board. I'm very proud of the hard work that we do. And the, you know, we have collaboration, we have discussion and it's very important that we have that discussion. And to more eyes on a project, you get better, better results in the kitchen. So cooking up a good thing. Yes, we need to work, we'll have more work to do on our budget. We'll have more work to do. It's the most important thing we do is the budget. So, but I'm glad to see we're moving ahead with our parking structure. Been very, it's very important to the community and we'll move ahead with the other aspects of what we need to do in the, this area. We want to be mindful of our taxpayers. And oftentimes we over-regulate and over-tax. And I want us to be mindful that we need to be careful on taxation of our citizens because we're hurting some of the people that we're trying to help. And I don't want to tax some people out of their homes. So, I really want to be careful with how we do this taxing and how we do this regulation. And I think all of the governmental entities in our county and our state need to be careful with their taxation and their over-regulation. That is what hurts businesses like the companies that build the houses and, you know, all the plumbing, all those things that go into that. If they're getting over-regulated, they can't do their job. They can't afford to. So we got to be kind of careful with that. I also mentioned, we're seeing a lot on the news about accidents, car accidents. Last, at our last meeting, I got paged out right after I finished making a statement that traffic is a health, health and safety hazard, public health hazard. And we had a fatal accident up in our neck of the woods. My wife was the second car behind it. She was a little shook up. She doesn't see that every day. I do. Not every day, thank God, but I see it too often. And I've been seeing it for over 50 some years. And I think that we need to crack down and hopefully hold people accountable for their actions. Obviously, sometimes it's a mistake, but oftentimes we're seeing cars and motorcycles and stuff driving in a very dangerous manner. And we need to stop it. We need to ask people to use their heads. Driving is a privilege, not a right. And people need to drive appropriately for everybody's safety. There was a recent article that every aspect, bicycles, pedestrians, cars, motorcycles, all went up in 2024. That was the statistics we currently have. A slight tick, but it went the wrong way. It went up, not down. So I'm trying to encourage my brother-in-law enforcement folks and our firefighters that have to go deal with this and our medical staff to crack down a little bit on the poor driving habits that some folks have. Unfortunately, it's only a 10%. The problem is the 10% has gotten bigger because we have more people now. But with that said, please be safe out there. Drive appropriately, walk appropriately. Need to have your head on a swivel so that you, you don't get in an accident or get hurt by somebody that is driving inappropriately or operating some kind of vehicle. But please thank those men and women, the men and women of our military and our local law enforcement, firemen, policemen, public health and safety people for their work they do every day. And keep them in your prayers and thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Vice Chair Pro Tem. Administrator?
All right. Thank you Chair. Vice Chair, Vice Chair Pro Tem, Commissioners. I have several highlights that I want to discuss with you tonight and share. And if you have any questions, happy to answer those. Wanted to, you know, highlight the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority's annual report. A lot goes into those reports, so I just like to take a little bit of time to recognize their contributions under the direction of our Macy Walters and Director Grover in the Planning and Development Department. Very small team that's dedicated to brownfield redevelopment, but a heck of a lot of impact. And so one thing that I'd like to recognize there, obviously a catalyst for development, redevelopment projects supported by the authority have leveraged more than $100 million in private investment, turning once, I'd say vacant or contaminated lots into thriving assets in the community. And so that's a testament to their leadership and their skill at the staff level and at the authority level from the, from the members that you appoint. They shepherd environmental stewardship and so they clean up and remediate projects that continue to protect our environment while encouraging responsible development. And so we're appreciative of that. And then their overall just community impact. Many of these brownfield-supported projects align with the county's housing and economic development priorities, creating spaces that serve residents and businesses alike. So just like to give my gratitude and appreciation to them. They do a lot of hard work, a lot of tough projects, a lot of constructive criticism as, as should be. And I'm sure that they'll, they'll roll a lot of that feedback into their processes moving forward. So definitely appreciate your, your guidance and your input into their processes. I wanted to also give some recognition to staff on preparation of the 2026 budget process. So definitely want to extend my sincere appreciation to everyone. There's a lot of work that has gone in to this budget process that really our Director Ryan Post has spearheaded in the sense that he's really done a lot of work behind the scenes to ensure that we're prepared and ready to respond efficiently as we continue to refine this budget. As you know, we are in the process of working with our lobbyists in the state to refine the revenue sharing numbers. And so we know we're around $248,000 short, but they also increased public safety revenue sharing. So we're trying to get some information from them on how that'll all balance out. It might balance out on the public safety side to where our numbers on the general revenue sharing side may, it just may be offset. So we're working with the lobbyist and Department of Treasury on that. But the budget team has been very diligent, professional and has really shown an unwavering commitment to transparency and fiscal responsibility. So a lot of work's gone in there. Wanted to also thank all the department heads, division leaders for their collaboration throughout the process. A lot of dialogue has really occurred that has transformed the budget process. We're appreciative of that. And then obviously a huge thanks to our lobbyist team because now that we do have a lobbyist, we were able to at least remain flat and not receive reductions in state revenue sharing. And Mac has a lot to do with that too. But really, I, I have to say Graham does a phenomenal job for the county on a lot of fronts and you'll hear more from him on the 21st. I wanted to give some insight, some foresight into some of your activities that you'll, or items that you'll consider rather on your October 21st agenda regarding emergency management and facility collaboration. So the FY26 budget, as you know, includes funding to support the remaining half of an emergency management position, completing a full-time complement dedicated to emergency preparedness and response. And that's in collaboration with the City of Portage. So in conjunction with that investment, companion items will appear on the 21st for a proposed purchase of real property from the City of Portage. And this facility will be used jointly with the Kalamazoo Consolidated Dispatch Authority as a backup emergency dispatch center. The county's Office of Emergency Management would also locate to that facility, creating a central hub for coordination and enhancing collaboration across agencies. So although the office will be based in Portage, we expect equipment will remain strategically distributed across the county to ensure redundancy and operational effectiveness and efficiency during critical incidents. So right now we have some equipment, for example, that's housed within the Road Commission and that equipment would stay, would not relocate to, to Portage, for example. I also wanted to highlight the senior expo and veteran stand down that occurred today at the Expo Center. So it marked, you know, a very important community event that honored seniors and, and veterans. So it connected older adults and caregivers to vital resources for healthcare and housing, to financial and resource, recreational opportunities rather, all in one place. And then the, it also coincided with the veterans' stand down where local veterans received free meals, haircuts and onsite assistance from Veteran Service Advisors and the Secretary of State's Mobile Unit. So that was an exciting event that was certainly not a, I, I would say, you know, it, it was a heavy lift. Nonetheless, a lot of folks attend and we rely heavily on our area agency on aging. So shout out to Don Seldia and his staff for participating in that event along with our participating organizations to ensure adults live well, remain active and age with dignity in their homes and communities. Lastly, I definitely want to, you know, my position allows me a little bit of privilege and I, I will exercise it for the month of October. And it is no, I would say it's, it's, it's no coincidence that I am wearing purple today. And October stands for a lot of things, but one in particular that it highlights is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And I wanted to definitely highlight that as you all know that my, that, that, that my sister passed away due to domestic violence. And a lot of individuals in communities don't speak up about it on both sides. One, those that are victims of it and those that are witnessing it. And I think that I would like everyone to reaffirm their commitment to supporting survivors of domestic violence. It's extremely important. And we, we have to be doing more of it, more about it to prevent it in our communities moving forward. So there are resources through the YWCA Kalamazoo. They provide a domestic assault program. And the 24-hour assistance line. The Prosecutor's Office also provides victim assistance and witness, their victim assistance and Witness Unit also provides resources along with a lot of advocacy partners in this area. I really apologize. I didn't think that I would get emotional. But one thing I'd say is that I know that together we can spread the awareness, prevention, and show compassion for people in this, that are experiencing this. You know, this is something that I never thought that me or my family would have to ever go through. And, you know, I would always hear about it and, you know, just like I said, just never thought that it, it would, it would hit home that close. So definitely, you know, keep, keep an eye out for those in the community that are experiencing something like this because it's not right. So lastly, on a, on a more, say on a more happy note, I do want to give some recognition and I, and I have to to Deputy Kelly. He is just a phenomenal resource for this building and Kalamazoo County as a whole. Not only does he provide exceptional service to our staff, to the residents of this community, to just folks that are visiting the community. He, he makes himself available and is just a, just, just a down-to-earth person. And so I come into this building, appreciate seeing him all the time. And when this issue happened, when my sister went through what she went through, Deputy Kelly was there, very supportive. And so I just appreciate coming into this building with, with staff like him and others that are very supportive. And I just want the community to know that that's a, that, that's a good man. So I have to keep him here and, you know, he, he ensures that we're safe. And we know when we walk in this building, we do feel safe. So, so much appreciated. Thank you Chair, I appreciate it.
Thank you Administrator Catlin. You know, I think you, you demonstrate a stellar level of professionalism for us, your service-mindedness. And just what an example of how to be a caring and loving man in this world, to stand up for people who need it. And one of the things we're all doing, you know, one of the main causes of families to become homeless is experience in fleeing from domestic violence. And we're working on that. We're going to launch the landing place. We have a lot of families that need it. So getting me in my feelings easy too, look at that. Okay, with that, are you, are you all right? Let's go to Commissioner Wheeler.
Oh, thank you Chair, we're all crying tonight. Thank you for being brave enough to share your story, Dr. Catlin. It's so, it's important. Other than that, I don't have anything else, but I do have to go back to work. So have a good night, everybody.
Commissioner Morales. Well, start, thank you for your service. Ron.
That's my brother from another mother. He makes sure Dr. Catlin didn't lie that in any situation I have never felt unsafe walking in this building. Couple of months ago, somebody ran up on me and he was on it. And then he said, nah, you look good. You look like he was about to sock him, so I didn't have to run downstairs. But we appreciate you and your service, 25 years. I pray that it's 25 more, at least while I'm still here. Thank you for your service too. Dr. Catlin, in a time where women's rights are being taken away, in a time where voting privileges look like they may be stripped, in a time where we don't have, in many states, control of our bodies and go through these issues, I appreciate your bravery as a man, as a black man, where in our community, we typically don't speak up about things like this. And it's kind of, it goes unsaid and you just deal with it. To our Chair's point, I know so many women who have just run away and are facing the issue of being houseless or homeless, which I'm sure if, if we dug into COC's data and, and saw what were some of those common causes of their tip report, we would see that. This has been a great night. Just congratulations to, either if you got reappointed or appointed. I'm excited about what's coming in Kalamazoo. I want to thank Director Bauchama. I'm her favorite commissioner, if y'all didn't know. Just for all of your hard work and your commitment to rebuilding Kalamazoo and making sure that you have affordable housing. I remember coming to you like, we need to stretch this AMI out. And I might've made a mistake because now it's at 100%. But I just wanted to make sure that folks were included, that, you know, maybe over the 50% AMI, but still getting pinched, as you mentioned, with, with taxes and all of the cuts. You know, stuff is about to hit, is hitting the fan. I'm not going to say it's about to, it's hitting the fan, especially with, you know, our nationwide budget cuts. Michigan is being hit and in some instances, we're doing what we got to do. I appreciate Prosecutor coming up because sometimes he always say he's not asking for nothing and still ask. And this was one of those asks, he never asked for much, I will say. It might be $5,000. But in this one, I want to make sure that we don't strip away $3 million by not making good decisions. So thank you for coming up and sharing those sentiments. It is, I'm getting older, my eyes ain't working. WMU's Homecoming, it's a great day to be a Bronco. Sorry for my Central Michigan folks, you made a bad decision. But Homecoming this weekend, March Down is Friday. If you are not too hip with what goes down at March Down, it's at Miller Auditorium. Doors open at seven, a Graystep show and play. And they have Axios truly to host. So if you haven't seen me in my radio element, come out on Friday and I'll show y'all what time it is. Shout out to Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, the, the only one sorority. And happy Hispanic Heritage Month. As Senorita Baboni said to you, you have four months to learn Spanish. So I look, I look forward to the Super Bowl. And with that, we gonna keep Kalamazoo a great place to live, work and play. Because you forgot tonight. Have a good night.
Thank you Commissioner Morales. Commissioner Mazer.
Commissioner Morales, you beat me to it. It was on my list of things to say. Okay, just a couple of things. Thank you Ron for your service. I, I too feel safe whenever I walk into this building. So thank you very much. Couple of other things. Dr. Catlin, you're in my thoughts and prayers still, you and your family. And this last, two weeks ago, Camelot closed. We had full houses. So, you know, and I found out this was our 97th season. It was the opening show for our 97th season at the Civic Theater. The next show is You're a Good Man Charlie Brown that opens this Friday. So I'm not in that, okay? But, but it'll be a great show. So, and then one last thing, I did the most awesome tour this last weekend. The Stewart Avenue Homes Home Tour. We have beautiful homes and, I mean, they're, they're, they're just lovely, absolutely lovely. So I would highly recommend that the next time it comes around. So thank you very much.
Thank you Commissioner Gisler.
Thank you Chair. I would like to compliment Ron for the terrific job he does. Thank you sir. And Kevin. You're a great administrator and a real man. Thank you. And both those guys were among the first to arrive were my assistants when I slipped and cracked my head in February on the curb. And they did take me to the ER and after six hours, they determined, okay, there's something inside there, you know. Two other things quickly. Voting equipment is going to be tested by the Clerk's Office and, and other places where the voting will take place. And I, I don't know that I'm as fully conversant with it as I should be, but the tabulators and all the other devices are going to be put through their paces in front of any citizen that wants to sit in and make sure that the voting is going to be done right the next time we do that, which is going to be in November. And the last thing is I always try to promote my own little group, Kalamazoo Citizens for Responsible Government. And we will be meeting next Monday, the 13th of October at 8:30 in the morning at Mike's, excuse me, Mark's Diner on Romance and Portage. And Mike Clayton, the Operations Director of Great Lakes Drone Company will be talking to us about what's happened in the drone industry in the last 18 months. We had the founder talk to us about 18 months ago and it was incredible. I, I'm a sucker for technology, but what they were doing was just beyond belief. And he did talk, this is the 18 months ago, the founder, Matt Quinn, said that they had just signed the biggest contract they'd ever had because they now do the, and I think it's like a three-year contract to do the home game. Instead of pyrotechnics, it's drones making an American flag wave. And when they do that, they've got over 600 drones in the air at the same time being operated by one computer somewhere. And, you know, so if you can get there and want to know more about drones, please do so. It's Mark's Diner on Romance. Mike Clayton is the presenter and it's at 8:30 on Monday. Everybody's welcome. Thank you.
All right, one last thing from Commissioner or Vice Chair Taylor.
Thank you very much. Happy birthday Gigi.
All right, with that, our statutory annual meeting is now in recess. We will reconvene on October the 21st at 6:30.